Yeah.
This is Crow.
Yeah.
This is Dr. Angelo.
This is Duffey.
Yeah.
This is Froyo.
Yeah.
This is Iadino.
Yeah.
This is Reverend Rogers here. This is Joel Trino.
Yeah.
This is Winslow.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Smith.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Casavi.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Sullivan.
Here.
These are all of them. Student Representative Caitlin Abbott.
Thank you. The first order of business is the approval of minutes from the regular session on February 23, 2009. We can take the appropriate motion or amendment for deletions, alterations, so moved by Mr. Altrino and seconded by Ms. Crowe. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is public comment, and now is the time for anyone in the audience to come forward regarding any topic on tonight's agenda.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Steele. I'm the Director of the Partnership for Community Schools in Malden, and we oversee all of the before-school, after-school, sports-related, and summer programs at the BB, Forestdale, Linden, and Salemwood schools. And I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here in the hope that you'll consider keeping two schools open for summer programming this year. I know that's an item that's on your agenda this evening. I fully understand the need to cut costs and know it would be much too costly to keep all of the buildings open this summer. However, I am here tonight to ask that we possibly have access to the BB and Salemwood schools this summer for PCSM-sponsored programs. I've given everybody a sheet. Did you all get that sheet outlining the numbers? And as you can see from that, that we run a number of programs in the summer. Many of these programs are free, and they are required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as part of our 21st Century Community Learning Center grants. These are programs that were required to run in order to keep our funding. In addition, in the past, we've run many fee-based and camp-like programs, such as enrichment and sports camps, throughout the city in order to raise revenue to keep our agency running throughout the year. As you can see, for the summer of 2008, we served a total of 1,293 students in our programs, and we cleared about $8,000 in revenue, which isn't a heck of a lot of money, but for a nonprofit organization such as ourselves, it certainly helps us meet the bottom line. We have a number of concerns for the summer of 2009. First, we believe even though the Salemwood school is a very large school, it will be difficult to consolidate all the programs we've listed on that sheet into one building. For example, a new requirement this year from the Department of Education is that we run an academic enrichment program for students in grades 1 through 5, which is something we haven't had to do in the past. The number that we've committed to is 110 students, which would mean we would have 110 students in our academic morning program, four students in grades 1 through 5 at the Salemwood. Then we are committed to serving between 200 and 250 students per week through our middle school channel surfing program. So again, if we consolidate all of that into one building, then we're looking at having the 200 to 250 students in the one place. In addition to that, we have our fee-based program, and we anticipate if we combine all of our schools into one building, we'd probably be serving about another 100 children in grades 1 through 5, both in the morning and in the afternoon. And on top of that, the Salemwood school is going to be hosting the middle school summer school, which they're anticipating probably 200 to 250 students in the building just in the mornings. We also will have our summer camps, as we've listed there, which doesn't impact the inside of the building too much, but it certainly does impact the flow of traffic and all of the kids that are at the building. We are going to try and spread some of our sports camps out, so summer in the morning and summer in the afternoon, so we're not doing everything at once, and we're trying to spread it out. But it will be difficult for us to accommodate all of these students and offer the same high-quality programming that we have in the past. We're also concerned that the programs in one building are going to impact negatively our enrollment. Even though the Salemwood is centrally located, we've found over the past eight years that families in Malden do not travel well. If a program is not located somewhat adjacent to where they reside, then they don't participate. You know, that may help putting all those kids in one building, because we'll have fewer of them, but we have DOE requirements where we have to meet certain numbers in order to continue our funding. So we believe having programs at the BB and the Salemwood will help us cover a good portion of the city and will help us keep our enrollment at an acceptable level so that we can continue to receive the grant funding. Now, at the present time, our middle school program, Channel Surfing, is funded for the BB, the Forestdale, and the Linden. It's not funded for the Salemwood. So what we're being asked to do is consolidate programs that are funded for somewhere else and put them into the Salemwood school. We have spoken with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education about this, and they have two concerns. They are concerned that the quality of our programming, trying to serve 200 to 250 students out of one location, it's going to negatively impact the quality we're going to be able to have. We try and have small class sizes, so if we have 200 to 250 students and we try and have 12 to 15 in each class, we're looking at having to run simultaneously about 20 classes an afternoon. The other thing that they have said to us is that they do want us to have the channel surfing program in at least one of the buildings that is listed in the grant, which would be the BB, the Forestdale, or the Linden. Now, we are serving a large number of students. We've served a large number of students for the past seven years, and we've become very good at using very little space in each school, and we've become very good at moving our program around so that we can accommodate the cleaning by the custodians. You know, we certainly will continue to do that. We know the buildings will not have air conditioning, and we believe we can schedule our programs to use a minimum amount of space, which means a minimum amount of utilities. So we hope that you consider letting us use both of these schools instead of just going to the one. You know, I hope you'll consider that the high-quality program we've offered for the past seven years in the summer and the past eight years during the school year, and the number of services we provide the families. You know, we serve 600 kids a day after school right now. We serve over 1,200 during the summer. That's a lot of children that are finding a place to go during the summer, and we don't want to cut those services any more than we have to. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Public comment portion of the meeting is still open, and now is time for anyone else to step forward. Not seeing any, we'll consider that portion of the meeting closed, and we will move on to item number 5.1. And we have Deputy Chief John Colangelo here from the Malden Fire Department and Chief, in order to accommodate your schedule, if you wouldn't mind stepping forward and telling us a little bit about the fire extinguisher issue at Malden High.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was contacted by some members of the school committee and asked to come up and comment on the progress we've done on the fire extinguishers at the high school, specifically the laboratories. And I did do an inspection of the laboratories with Mr. Brown, and we found that some of the extinguishers weren't the actually appropriate size and the appropriate type for the hazard. I contacted Peg Crowe from the school committee, and then contacted Mr. Malanson. We are going to address that issue. I believe forthwith they will be the appropriate type and the appropriate size. My one comment would be, I'm going to be meeting with Mr. Brown on Wednesday, that we have some training done for some of the teachers, because a fire extinguisher, if you're not really trained properly in it, can sometimes actually be a hazard.
Thank you, Chief. Questions of Deputy Chief Colangelo regarding fire extinguishers. Mr. Altrino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy, I have a quick question. On, by state law, your inspections must be, what, yearly in public buildings, or...
Quarterly.
Quarterly. And then, is there an outsourced company that we use to re-tag those?
Yes, sir.
And all those are in compliance?
Yeah, they're local. The water extinguishers that were in the high school at one time have been removed by the fire department, but the other extinguishers, which are the dry chemical type, which are actually the appropriate type, are then checked quarterly, and I believe we have a contract with a local company.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altrino. Other questions of the deputy chief? Otherwise, deputy, thank you very much for the update and thank you very much for your continued cooperation.
Thank you.
Moving back to the agenda items in order, we will cover items 3 and 4, student achievement and superintendent's reports, and hear from Superintendent Smith regarding those items.
Okay, thank you very much. First of all, in terms of student accomplishments, I want to start out the meeting with a couple of Malden High School notes. The first one, want to salute all of the folks who were involved in the junior varieties program at the high school last Friday evening and Saturday. I know if anybody here got a chance to go, you saw some absolutely terrific entertainment on the part of the students, but I think just as importantly, I went on Friday night, and the sense of camaraderie among all of the kids is equally impressive. No matter who was onstage, no matter how well they did, everybody was behind them. It was a truly, it was a great tribute to all of the kids at Malden High, as well as the faculty, and I'd like to particularly thank the class advisors, Robin Dougherty, who's an English Language Arts teacher, Jen Eby, who's a special education teacher, and Paul Femiglietti, who's a paraprofessional at the high school. Thank you, and kudos to all of those folks. And then, secondly, congratulations also go out to a group of Malden High students who received third place at the Regional National History Day competition held at Winchester High School this last Saturday. The students, all juniors, David Reamer, Herman Say, Malik Blue, and Matthew Maggio, and their advisor Greg Hurley, developed, researched and developed a project entitled "The Desert Fox: Life and Legacy of Erwin Rommel." Now, to place third is really quite an achievement. They were competing with students from over 20 cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth, and I think a special note of congratulations is due not only to those students, but to Mr. Hurley, their advisor, as well as a number of faculty who went and served as judges at the competition on Saturday, including Assistant Superintendent Joe Sullivan. So I want to thank all of those folks. Any questions before I move into my report? Okay. First of all, in terms of the budget update, as we all know, each month we do have a budget update. In terms of FY '09, you'll notice in your packet the monthly report that is submitted by Ms. Oliver. That's available for, if anybody has any questions about that. In addition, in relation to the budget for FY '10, a budget proposal has been completed, and it will be submitted to the Budget Subcommittee in time for the Budget Subcommittee's to, for the committee to deliberate before the next Budget Subcommittee meeting. So I would ask that Budget Subcommittee meetings be set as soon as possible. I'm particularly interested in moving forward with discussions of the budget so that we can, even though the stimulus, we don't know all of the money from the stimulus package yet, we can at least come to agreement on the principles that are embedded in the budget so that when we find out about that money, which I anticipate is going to be another couple of weeks, we can quickly deliberate and make final decisions about the budget that will come to full committee. So I just ask that a Budget Subcommittee meeting be set as soon as possible. Any questions about the budget?
Mr. Winslow.
Yeah, could you be sure that the information that goes to the Budget Committee also goes out to the whole school committee so that we can just be apprised of what's being considered and end the date as well so that we can attend and hear that, if that's possible? Thank you.
Absolutely. Other questions? Okay. I'll move forward to the next item. It has to do with sheltered English instruction, the SEI program in the Malden Public Schools. This year, the district concentrated the instruction of newly arrived and second-year immigrant students in two schools, in BB and Salemwood, with the larger portion of students at Salemwood. And the move was made to increase the number of teachers in any one school to the level that instruction could be differentiated both by grade level and by level of language proficiency. We've met with great success at Salemwood this year, where we've concentrated most of the teachers and most of the students, with the exception of two teachers, and there were 42 students at BB this year. Now, we've not had such success at BB school largely because, again, the concentration of teachers is not sufficient to be able to differentiate the instruction by level, grade level, and by language proficiency. So what I am recommending, and what we are, is currently in the plans for next year, is to move all of the students, all of the SEI students, to Salemwood, which was the ultimate plan that was presented last year, was to get everybody concentrated at Salemwood. I believe we're ready to do that next year. The net effect would be that if, and we've assessed each of the students at BB, the net effect would be the 22 current BB students would likely move from BB to Salemwood because they would continue to need sheltered English instruction next year, and the other 20 students who are currently at BB in grades 1 through 4 will be fully mainstreamed, and they would remain at BB. The 22 students who we would recommend move to Salemwood, their family would in fact have the option to opt out of the program if they wanted their child to stay at BB, but were they to receive SEI instruction, which is what we would recommend, those students would move to Salemwood School. And that process of moving from one school to another in order to maintain services is not an unusual activity that takes place within the district, but we want to get all of those SEI classrooms and all of those teachers and students concentrated at Salemwood. I've also met with all, with the principals at both Salemwood and BB. They strongly support that. Have met with the Director of English Language Learner Instruction. She strongly supports the move, so I present that for your feedback this evening.
Questions of the superintendent on that element of the report? Ms. Rivera Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Smith, have you heard anything from the parents themselves? Anything positive, negative? Are they supporting your proposal?
Well, we haven't talked to all of the parents yet. I know that Director of English Language Learners, Ms. Serpa, has talked to some of the parents, and they are amenable to doing that. I think that there will be, it will be incumbent on us to sell this, I do think, in the sense that, you know, if you've had your child in any school for a year and you've gotten comfortable with that school, you have to be convinced that the best services are going to be made available to your child if they are provided in a different school. So we know that we need, we will need to talk to the parents and sell them on the program, sell them on the fact that the best services will be available at Salemwood. And given the experiences we had last year, when we did make a move of a substantial number of students from Linden to Salemwood as we concentrated the programs, most of the parents exceeded. Most of the parents decided that that was in the best interest of their kids. So, you know, if that's a fair pilot, if you will, I think that we'll be quite successful in having the parents be pleased consumers at Salemwood.
Do we have enough classrooms available at the Salemwood to provide such...
We do. We do, and I've talked to both Dr. Pons and, well, that's actually the area that would be most effective, because it is the grades 1 through 4 SEI, and he assures me that there is more than adequate space to make the move. I mean, we're talking about 22 students right now, so he's quite sure that we can accommodate that.
Thank you.
Yes, Sid, I know you mentioned that you are considered a great success. Could you explain both in the short term how you see that as success and what goals you would have for a long-term success in student achievement? I mean, I think there's always a concern of, you know, concentrations of students that, you know, is that a good, for long-term success of Salemwood and schools in general?
Well, the most immediate things that have happened is that by having this concentrated concentration at Salemwood, we don't have teachers working with kids who are in multiple grades and at multiple levels, so that they don't have to have, say, two, three, or four different levels of students in the same classroom and really having to not only differentiate their instruction, but the time that they are able to devote to those kids. So all of the feedback that I've received from the teachers, as well as from the students, and I've visited every single class in the building and have talked to the kids as well as the teachers, is that they are very, very pleased with the instruction and the engagement of the kids. In addition to that, the assessments that we have given, particularly the mid-year assessments, have indicated that we are, that our, the kids, the first indications are that we are going to be much, much more successful at mainstreaming the kids much more rapidly than might have otherwise been the case. That was the long-term goal of the move anyway, so that, I think that we're seeing some short-term indications that the long-term goal is already being met. The biggest goal is to make sure that every single kid, and this is one of our, one of our initial, one of our goals for the district, for all kids in the district, is given the right kind of instruction, the right level of instruction, so that they can be mainstreamed as quickly as possible. That's the ultimate goal. We're seeing some indications of that already happening, and I anticipate the more we can level the instruction, the better that will happen. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Freyler. Thank you, Mr. Winslow.
Mr. Smith, will we have to provide any transportation for these students that have gone from BB to Salemwood?
Well, we did an initial assessment of the transportation. We believe that we have, since the numbers are low, we have enough available seats right now so that it shouldn't have an impact on transportation. We're going to keep looking at that, you know, once parents make decisions about what they're going to do, but we do not anticipate any impact of any sort of financial in the move.
Thank you. Questions on the right. All questions answered?
Okay.
I have, Chair has one.
Sure.
Is there then any head count relative to whether or not their siblings are involved? So could some families have a student who might be...
Have an older student who's still at BB. You know, I don't, I don't have that count. I can get that count for you, though, pretty quickly.
So would that be an accommodation that the system would make? Would we take, say, a family would prefer that two siblings stay together...
Right.
Even though one may not be in sheltered immersion?
The family can make that decision. Right. The family can make that decision to keep the child, move the child out of, out of the SEI program and stay at the...
And does the sheltered immersion program go on the extended day schedule?
It does go on the extended day schedule.
Parents would understand that there's a different timetable?
That's right. That's right. The kid, the, all of the students in the SEI program are there for the full day, that the regular education students are there.
And how does, just out of curiosity, does their program of studies take into account the bumps in their classroom, take into account their sheltered immersion work mainly, or does it go to...
Well, what has typically, well, what has typically happened is that at Salemwood is that students in each of their subjects, because of the extended day, are given the opportunity to have more time in each of their subjects so that they would have more time in the SEI instruction. It's a lot easier to accommodate the amount of time that we need to instruct them. They also do, on rotation, they have some extra exploratories, and those kids participate in those exploratories just like the regular education students. Okay. Okay. Third item, or actually, the fourth item, is a data warehouse policy. The school district has initiated a pilot program with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education called the Data Warehouse Program. And the program will allow us to take advantage of the DESE's capacity, data analysis capacity. It will allow us to begin to analyze, disaggregate, compare, contrast, all of the assessments that we currently administer with kids in comparison with the assessments that the, that the state administers, most particularly the MCAS. But by having this access to the data warehouse, we can load in, if you will, data from our district assessments, our report cards, and do analyses of that data as it relates to MCAS, which is a capacity that we currently don't have. In addition, we'll be able to analyze and create reports on any other local and state student data that resides both at DESE as well as within the Malden Public Schools. Now, as part of that pilot program, we have to approve and implement a new data access policy that relates to all users of the data warehouse. And I have submitted to you a draft of that policy, and it's actually a combination policy and contract, and we have the interest in being able to move forward as quickly as possible so that we can begin the full training within the district so that folks can access the data warehouse. So I'm submitting this for approval or the appropriate reference, if you will, to Subcommittee, to the Policy Subcommittee.
Questions on the proposed policy? Ms. Iadino.
I sit in the proposed letter. I just, one addition in that third paragraph down. All requests for access to the, must be submitted, should be, I would include, in writing to the Director of Technology, just to tighten it up.
Okay.
Because it is a very sensitive, could be a very sensitive document.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others on the right. Ms. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had actually a clarification. Weren't, didn't last year we buy a machine that's going to disaggregate, or we were looking at buying the machine to disaggregate some of the data? And what happened with that and for not using it?
It didn't go as well as I would have liked. We had, it was from RISO. And we used it, and as recently as the mid-year assessments this year, and we found that it wasn't giving us the kind of data that we wanted. At the same time, we used an alternative system from Scantron, a fairly rudimentary system that did give us some good, some good data, but didn't disaggregate to the level that we wanted to. The thing is, even if we have a system in the district that allows us to disaggregate our mid- and end-of-year assessments, it doesn't allow us to package that together in a larger warehouse with, with even our own grades, not to mention MCAS, so that we can do cross-assessment studies to see what the correlation is between grades, MCAS, and our own district assessments. We need the capacity of the larger warehouse to do that. So just with the, with our local system, we can just, for example, take our mid- and end-of-year assessments, disaggregate that data, but it exists as a kind of a static body that we can't cross-reference or compare with anything else.
So if we, when we do this pilot project, what would we do with the, would that still be useful, or we won't even reset it back?
We basically, yeah, we're not pleased with RISO, and RISO is now exiting the district as a result of that. But we're pursuing, because we did have the success we did with Scantron, actually just starting a pilot now to really pilot their entire system for the third marking term math assessments to see whether or not that particular vendor will be able to meet the needs that RISO was not.
Okay. And just one more thing. On the policy there, in the fifth paragraph, the last sentence is, if the employee leaves, it says, "At such time, all saved data must be destroyed." So the what, the Malden Public Schools will not have access to the data?
No. The way it sounds, it looks like... The user, the data, the user...
The user won't have access, but if it's destroyed...
That person's data will be destroyed.
Okay.
Right. The data, yeah, right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. See if there are any other takers, Mr. Iadino, and I'll get back to you for the second. Mr. Iadino.
Mr. Smith, is there a financial impact to this? And if so, what would it be?
Uh, no, there's not. There's no financial impact. DESE is supporting the pilot program. I really don't anticipate an ongoing financial impact either.
Thank you. I guess there are some takers in there. Mr. Winslow, then, Ms. Rivera Rogers.
Will this ultimately allow aggregation for students from year to year? So if students are in five years in the school district, we can have a better sense of where they are?
Right. It will give us active passing. One thing I didn't mention is that we're in this pilot with DESE, because this is where DESE wants to go throughout the Commonwealth, so that we will be able to not only look at a variety of pieces of data within a year, we will be able to look across a year, or I'm sorry, across multiple years, do longitudinal studies, and then ultimately, I'm sure that there will be increased capacity to look at similar districts across the Commonwealth so that we can... so that we can really, really get a handle on, on our data over time.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Ms. Rivera Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, being everything said and all questions answered, I, I make a motion to send this to policy.
Moved and seconded. Some notations noted. Minor amendments, if needed, for the policy committee to take up in addition to the body of their document. All in favor on the referral policy?
Aye.
Reposed. And we would hope that we get a report out soon.
I, I would hope that the policy committee would meet in our mid-month meeting in two weeks, so that we could consider it then because we need to move forward as quickly as we can.
So for the 23rd?
The 23rd, alright.
So noted.
Okay, thank you very much. And the final item on my report does have to do with the, the summer programs. And I am recommending that in order to diminish the energy and operational costs attributed to our summer programs, including summer programs from Community Partnership for Schools, also from the YWCA, which has a program over at Ferryway, as well as our middle, middle school, summer school, that they, they be consolidated at some, at the Salemwood School. I want to backtrack a little bit to give you a sense about the thinking that's going on behind this. I've also put together a draft which you will have in your hands certainly, I can actually get it in your hands by the mid-month meeting of a more comprehensive energy plan for the district, both during the school year and during the summer. A piece of that energy plan during the summer speaks to, and again, it is draft, so all of this is open for, for feedback. But the idea in the summer will be to shut down energy in all zones and all buildings not being cleaned or not housing summer programs. So that would mean in, in this case, if Somerville is, uh, Somerville, why am I saying, I keep wanting to say, if Salemwood, if Salemwood is housing the, all of the programs, all of the other buildings, the energy would be shut down in the entire building except in the single zone that is being cleaned at that time. I met and talked with Mike Sullivan a good bit about this and we can isolate the energy to a single hallway if we choose to, so that, and we can actually, if you need lighting, you can actually turn the lights off in all of those classrooms except for the classrooms that are being cleaned. That's going to be obviously more important during the school year when we clean during the evening. But the idea again is to isolate all of that, the energy utilization to as small a space as possible at any point in time. That's the biggest reason why I would like to see us move all of the programs over to the Salemwood. If the programs are at the Salemwood, it would also include our PACE programs and they do require air conditioning. So there would be air conditioning that would be provided at Salemwood. Again, we would isolate that to the extent that we are able. Mike and I are meeting later this week. I think it's a little bit harder to isolate that once the chillers are turned on on top of the building. But again, we're, we're gonna, by having the PACE program also at the Salemwood, where we do need to provide air conditioning, will also be isolated to a single building. I think the challenge is, are we going to be able to serve the students well in the programs? I think we can. I think that we have the, the facility to do that. The principals at Salemwood both support the moves. I met with all of the principals last week and all of the K-8 principals are supportive of the move to do this. In terms of the DESE's concern about programs not being offered at Beebe, Forestale, and Linden, or at least at one of those schools, I think that that's a point taken that I would certainly like to address with DESE. We are talking about serving the same students. I think that we have all intentions, I know we have all intentions to serve the students as well at Salemwood as they would be served in any of the other schools. I would hope that the nameplate on the, above the front door that they walk through is not the driving factor in making this decision on the part of DESE. So with all of that, I am recommending the consolidation of the programs to Salemwood, including the middle school, summer school for this summer.
Questions on that aspect of the superintendent's report and recommendation? On the right, Mr. Altrino, or who from Mike's office?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to actually agree with the superintendent on consolidating the schools during the summer. The school currently during the year services 1,100-plus children at the Salemwood. 1,200 children. It has some of the most state-of-the-art facilities such as gym, classroom, technology. If we're in, last year, the superintendent worked tirelessly to reduce the number of kilowatt-hours in the schools by actually physically going to some of the schools and having those lights shut off. During this year, the money we could not only save, what we will save, could be put to sponsoring a teacher or a position in the schools. I don't, being involved in summer programs, I don't believe, and that's actually up to the superintendent, that it would conflict or diminish the programs that these organizations run for us. So I would ask the committee wholeheartedly to support the superintendent's decision. We, you know, the schools are there for the community. We talked about the hall rental stuff this year, but I think it's time for us to utilize a school and try to save as much as we can so that during the regular school year, we can actually put that money into use, whether it's a position or not. This year especially, we need to really concentrate on some cost savings and I trust the superintendent. Also spoken to Mr. Sullivan of the Buildings Committee and he too says you'll see the savings right away. So the buildings are great building, would support all the children that we need to support, especially those in the Malden School System, and I ask that the committee support this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altrino. Staying on the right, Ms. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, but before we actually take a vote on this, I know time is of the essence, especially for the partnership programs. And just really speaking for, actually from a YWCA perspective, we do have a lot of vouchers and it's a partnership between YWCA and the Ferryway School. So before we actually take a vote on this, is there an opportunity to be able to talk to the DESE to make sure that it's, it is not going to impact their funding or even the state on our, on the YWCA side to make sure that these vouchers can be? Otherwise, we have, 100 kids are going to lose vouchers and they'll have no, after, no summer programs. So, you know, those are concerns, so to make sure that we can make some of these changes with their approval.
That's a question of me-
That's the question for you.
I'm quite, I'm quite fine with that. As long as we can get that done over the next two weeks and bring it to the next committee meeting, I would be, that would be quite fine with me. As, and you and I talked and also Karen, you know, my biggest concern was moving forward so that your, your program and training that taken place could get rolling on time. So if you're willing to move that back to two weeks, I'm, I'm quite fine to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Altrino, continue.
Just a point of information. The contracts you have with children of the Ferryway, is it because they're members of the Malden Public School community or because they actually go to a, the Ferryway School?
Well, they all happen to be from the Ferryway School.
But if we service them in, within the city, is that something that would be against-
Do you need to share that microphone?
Sorry. He's nagging at you. Go ahead.
Would that be something, say we, you have a contract with 200 children in the Malden Public School System on a voucher, is, if we're providing them the, if we're providing the program, the space, how would that be, even though they're from a school district, if we provide the transportation, whatever it, the grant states, is that a violation of where, you know, we could put them in any school? Is that correct?
No, no. And that, and just speaking really from the YWCA and it's a licensed program, so when people get vouchers, it says, because we have multiple programs, it says either our site-based, which is Ferryway, so it says Ferryway YWCA Center, or our center base was at 54 Washington Street. So it's very specific to the location of the school that you can't transfer them. So I just want to make sure that we, we are, are we still like the Ferryway partnership? And we do have grants that we're working on with the Ferryway, so that'll kind of affect some of those with Mass 2020 and others.
One more question.
Thank you. Does, when they write grants, does the DESE take in consideration the cost of utilities to the school system or any other costs? You write the grant every year, I assume, for these children in certain schools?
Some of them are grants, some of them not.
Okay.
That'd be something I think-
Would you mind if I asked that, Mr. Smith?
Ms. Still, come right forward. The time here to join the dialogue.
The grants are written specifically for certain locations. When we write the grants, we, you know, typically write them about six to nine months ahead of time. The superintendent's office and all of the building principals sign the grant saying, yes, they agree that they will provide these services in these buildings for these programs. So the grants have all been signed and, and agreed upon by the various folks in administration saying that we run at the Beebe, Linden, and Forestale.
And is there-
And the DOE is, is fine with us consolidating to a certain point. What they're concerned about is the fact that, you know, we can't offer 30, try and run 30 classes at the same time with, with summer school, with summer-type staff like you can in a regular school day when you're servicing 1,100 kids.
And is there an amendment to the grant that you could file? Because if a school committee in any of the 300-plus districts in the state end up renovating a school or deciding because of the cost factors that we can't keep these schools open, there must be a process for-
Yeah, I don't know what the amendment, I know what the amendment process would be if we had to change our budget, for, for example.
Okay, right.
The amendment process for changing locations has never been formalized in, in that regard. Typically, you know ahead of time, you know, Fitchburg is an example where they run programs at all their elementary schools, but in the summer, they move all of them to high school. Well, they know about that ahead of time, so they put that in the grant, that, you know, we're going to do this during the school year and we're going to do this during the summer. You know, moving forward in the future, of course, we're going to rewrite our grants to say we're going to be at different locations, but we didn't write it that way for this particular grant because we weren't aware that that was going to be the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altrino. Staying on the right, we'll go to student representative. Ms. Zapp.
I just have a comment. I did the summer program when I was at Beebe School and the quality was great. I learned a lot and it was a safe place for me to go. And I know that Salemwood's considered a central location, but just walking there from my side of town near the Beebe takes about, it would probably take an hour to walk. I mean, I don't know, I guess I'm not walking as fast as I could be. But no, but in all honesty, it takes, it takes a long time and I, I would be concerned that you would lose some students who wouldn't want to go that far away and some of the students who would pay for the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staying on the right, Mr. Idino, if no one else is with him. Ms. Idino.
You said that you had a number of meetings with Mike Sullivan from the Building Department. What do you anticipate is the savings?
Well, that's a question that I have not been able to get a real solid answer to for a year. And, and Mike has pursued the vendor, most particularly the folks that, you know, are in charge of the HVAC system, you know, to try and get exact, you know, figures on this. Last year, we tried to get it in anticipation of the summer, trying to figure out how much money we would save. And then if, I think if you recall, when we finally got the numbers, we saved $25,000 by shutting down the, you know, the air conditioning. It's, I, I'd be the first to say I wish I had an exact dollar figure, you know. Mike is of the impression that there'd be a precipitous drop in, in, in cost, but, but when I asked to, can you nail that down to a dollar figure, it's very difficult to get that. I mean, I think what we can do is, but we did this last year also. I can share again the kilowatt-hours that we, you know, measured from the previous summer versus last summer and we can look at those numbers, but basically what that adds up to is, is what would happen if we shut down the, the air conditioning. But what would happen if we shut down all of the systems and located it to one zone at a time? Again, I asked Mike if we can figure, you know, we can get a, a number attached to that. He's going to try and do it, but I, I just had to decide whether I was going to go forward with the recommendation without those numbers and I decided to do that.
Well, it would seem that if they're going to reduce the, the air conditioning usage during the summer at the other buildings and concentrate everything in the Salemwood, we should be able to get a handle on what the savings would be across the district with those other schools. I'd be very, for one, I'd be very interested in, in knowing what that cost saving is.
Yeah, I think at the very least, just like last year, we found out at the end of the pilot, if you will, how much we saved this year if we shut down any of the schools entirely, as we intend to, except for that single zone that's being cleaned at any point in time, we'll at least be able to have this summer service of pilot, which gives us an exact figure on how much it costs last summer versus this summer to really do that.
Secondarily, my concern, having been principal of that building and knowing the, the absolute size of it, is the cleanliness aspect and getting it cleaned and ready for school without having to pay custodial overtime.
Right.
So, I mean, if there's any savings, it's going to be eaten up by paying custodial overtime. It, it seems as though it would be a wash.
Well, I, I think that, you know, the strategy that we can, we can have play out here is that all, all of the other schools should be spick and span a whole lot earlier than they ever were, you know, because all of the other schools had some activity in them. We should be able to concentrate our custodial force in August in Salemwood once, once these programs are finished so that it can have a very thorough and much quicker cleaning than would have otherwise been the case.
We hope that not all the custodians across the other buildings want their vacation in August or nobody sustains an injury that would preclude the building from being cleaned.
And I, I believe, I'm not absolutely sure, but I think that those vacation plans have to be approved. I would hope that we could do this in a systematic way and actually am going to, as I mentioned to you before, and this will, this will be submitted to the Budget Subcommittee, this draft of a, of an energy plan, that will have to involve collaborative work among all of us in the city, including the custodians in each of the buildings.
From y'all lips to God's ears. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Idino. Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Superintendent, do we have a handle on the number-
Or programs that will be trying to go into the Salemwood at that point and the total number of students?
Well, we have, right, we have the numbers that come from, from Karen. We have, and the numbers that she reflected, or that she mentioned today are fairly accurate. You know, her numbers plus the, the approximate number of middle school, summer school students is about probably 200, 250, we think. I have no question that there's plenty of room to be able to serve those kids. I think what we need to do and what if we wait until the next, you know, meeting to actually vote on this, is that we'll also have an opportunity to sit down and talk more particularly about exactly where and how. And so by the, by the next meeting in two weeks, we can bring all of that very particular information to you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Ms. Rivera Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, these grants that are being received by different, the different schools, are these grants set forth for the particular school or for the students that are within that school? If anybody can answer that. So in other words, if they were relocated, would be the student from the Beebe School or the student from the Ferryway School that would participate in the program at a different location?
I mean, if you're, if you're asking me, I mean, I, I have the same question. I think the spirit of it is that we're serving the kids, not, not a particular facility, but I can speak for either Karen or Peggy, who know the grants much better than I do.
So while the conversation is being had while you're trying to decide if we're going to move forward with having all the programs at the Salemwood School, you will find the answer to that?
Yeah, I think when, you know, over the next two weeks, we will sit with DESE and we'll flesh all of this out. And I, as I said before, I have no problem doing that. We had talked before and that had come up and, and I'm quite amenable to doing that and I think we'll have a better answer to your question in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera Rogers. Yep. Couple of observations from the chair on the topic. Couple of observations from the chair on the topic. Both, not both, but all three members that sit on the body for the Partnership for Community Schools are members of this voting body as well, Mr. Duffy, the superintendent, myself. You know, a little bit of history here, when we put these schools online, we, one of our targeted goals was to have them as community-oriented assets after hours. We've talked about this topic in a couple of different ways, one of them being the exercise that we just went through about rental costs, and times to have schools available after hours in the evening. This is one other facet of this. Now, the city was one of the first communities in all of the United States to go after the various 21st century grants that were available, to put an active community schools program in place. And Steele does a great job, as does her staff, as do the people who participate in the program and help teach after hours. And Mr. Brown was the director preceding Ms. Steele, who helped us get it launched and get it off the ground. But although I don't want to characterize the program as a luxury, because it is an essential thing for some people to have on an after-school basis, but it is not a mandated activity by a school district. We are going to be faced with choices this year that are going to swap the issue of whether or not we have a very active and vibrant after-school program. We have it, it's a good thing to have. Apparently, the money is still there from the variety of sources that it comes in from, on both the federal and state level, to run such a program, but this district and the entire Commonwealth is going to be primarily talking about keeping teachers employed in classrooms for the upcoming school year. So as much as, and I would prefer to see an active summer program, and we have a very vibrant after-school program in each one of the schools, I'd like to see the summer program exist everywhere, if we could do that. But there are just some things that we're in the reach of getting everything done for next year, not going to be able to accomplish. So, you know, as much as I would like to have my druthers, we just have to understand that in this year, if we can come out of the year with an active after-school program in the summertime, then even if it's at one location, then I think we'll be doing our very best by the community. So although I'm not saying that it has to be, the way the superintendent has outlined it just yet, but I think the committee, in taking a look at the potential savings on energy, and the return benefit of having the schools cleaner over the summertime break, and we have, as I've said before, been using these schools pretty heavily now for 10 years straight, on a year-round, nonstop basis, most hours, most days, until the hours of 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock at night. So it will have the, the idea, at least has the double beneficial effect of ramping down our costs for one year, and allowing our facilities people to be able to catch up on many of these other facilities, and make sure that we're maintaining them as, and cleaning them as, to a level that we'd like to maintain as well, so. So again, we should, there are giving and takings and all kinds of these issues, let's see what it is the superintendent can come back with as far as the information on where the grants can flow to, and I'm sure the partnership would urge the committee to have as active and as vibrant a program as we can have in the summertime, but if the information in the end drives us to a substantial, the prospect of a substantial savings, then I think the committee, in putting together its 2009 and 2010 budget, is going to be hard-pressed to use those dollars for saving as many teaching positions as possible, so we should keep that in mind as we go through the dialogue. Like to have it all, this may be a year where we cannot afford to have it all, but for the time being, let's at least take it into account. Any other questions of the superintendent's report? Moving on to deliberations, item number one, we've taken care of with the report from Deputy Chief Colangelo. Item number two, the public schools website, and Ms. Crowe has some documentation that's been given to everybody outside of the folders, and we'll hear from her on that.
Actually, I just brought this up because someone had called me on, when they were trying to find someone's information, actually, Mr. Keefe, the new director of athletics, he was not listed anyplace, and of course, Mike Dube was, so he'd get, he'd get the emails and couldn't really find him. So it was just really, actually, to Mr. Fan Dewey, sort of, is there a policy on updating the website? And I know that we had talked offline, and it is all the directors and the principals that keep their sites updated, but is there any, like, training, does someone know to go in, or knows how to go in and make the changes, or they submit the changes to you? You know, and how do we know that we're keeping up with the most current information? Because some of it was outdated. I see it's all been cleaned up, though.
Do you want to report, Mr. Fan Dewey? Invited to the room. Howie.
Mayor, and school committee, I just want to quickly respond to that. The modern public school website consists of many pages. Stop in our district act like an altar to a part of the website, so each individual had their own permission to go in and update their own site. Of course, throughout the year, some of the information you found probably inaccurate, so any type of inaccurate information should be reported, either to, directly to the tech department, which is always on the website, or the school department. So we quickly find the individual who needs to update, and we will assist that individual to update the website.
Other questions of Mr. Fan Dewey on the website and the content of it? Ms. Zab.
Is there a calendar for when the school committee meetings are on the website? Because I went there a couple months ago, and I didn't find one, and I feel like some people might want to see that, so they know when to come to the meetings.
Don't know if it's on the City of Marvin's website, or have you posted on City of Marvin's? Is it linked? It is on-
Is it? Okay.
The answer is, it's on the-
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions of Mr. Fan Dewey on the content of the website? Otherwise, Ms. Crowe, questions answered, and updates done?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fan. Item number three, snow removal by private contractors. Mr. Duffy has brought the item forward, we'll hear from Mr. Duffy.
Thank you. Actually, it's a two-part question. One is on the snow removal, and then two is just on school cancellations. But regarding the snow removal, my personal experience is Tuesday at the BB School, when I went down to drop my daughter off, I noticed that it was a pretty poor job from a pedestrian point of view. The sidewalks were cleared, and the parking lots were cleared, but a lot of the snow was piled up right in the crosswalks, and it was just done, in my view, by someone who wasn't really aware of the amount of pedestrian traffic we have around the schools. On Wednesday, when I came back, it was completely different. Someone had gotten in there and really opened up all the crosswalks, and you didn't have to climb over mountains to get into the street, to cross the street. So my question on that is, my understanding is that a private contractor was used to do the schools Wednesday afternoon or Tuesday morning. Is that the case? And I also heard that it was the DPW that came to fix it, and so is that the case? And what is the cost difference, and wouldn't it have been easier to do just the DPW initially? I'm trying to find out some answers.
The chair will take on it. A little bit of history, the school committee for many years did fund private snow removal. And I believe right around the time that Mr. Malanson's Public Facilities Department took over the custodial function, we eliminated the, and I think we're having budgetary issues in a particular fiscal year, we eliminated that line item, and asked that our DPW work together with Mr. Malanson's crew to remove snow from all of the facilities in question. So to the best of my knowledge, to the extent that a private contractor may work for the DPW as part of its snowfighting effort, and that cost is obviously absorbed by the city in the snow and salt and wintertime budgeting, there wouldn't be any private contractor utilized, again, unless it came under the direction of the DPW. So there's no cost to it. In general, I've asked over the years that both the DPW director, Mr. Manship, and Mr. Malanson coordinate their activities as precisely as they can. Obviously, removal of snow from the major arteries is one of the first things DPW does, and as soon as the major streets are opened up, in the event, there's an impact on the schools, there's a concern about opening school for the next day. Mr. Manship devotes a requisite amount of resources to Mr. Malanson's operation to have the sidewalks done, the snowplow, sidewalk plows actually begin in and around the schools, and work out from there. Parking lots are cleared, which can be a difficult issue, because you have off-street parking for neighborhoods, when you have a snow emergency call and on, so there's juggling of vehicles at all of the locations in the community. So I'm surprised to hear that, because I rode around Sunday evening of the storm, and I thought that they did a particularly good job. I went to all of the schools purposely to make sure that Mr. Malanson and Mr. Manship had coordinated in an effort to have things done throughout the day on Monday, and then Monday night going into Tuesday. So I thought they all looked pretty well in comparison to some past storms, where we had problems moving cars out, and particularly in parking lots, so. But if there are particular crosswalk locations that either parents are complaining about or are concerned about, then that's certainly something we can relay to the DPW in their, in their effort to, to have the block cats, which do the sidewalk cleaning, cover the particular routes. But when you have a significant snowfall, you've got mounding, you know, especially at intersections, we know that that has been a problem for many parents in the past. We try to have the DPW tackle that issue as best they can. But again, the issue of private contractors is irrelevant, except to the extent that their, their efforts are directed by the DPW.
Well, then I guess my question turns into a commendation for whoever came back Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday morning to touch it up again, because they did a terrific job compared to Tuesday, in my view. The second point that I wanted to raise, or the second question, was around the school cancellation, and this was the second storm that we had, that came in on a Sunday night, and the school was canceled for Monday. And I'd heard from some parents about the difficulty finding health care with a late notice, and being a parent myself, I understand that completely. So I was just thinking that this might be helpful to have the superintendent share your thoughts on when you call school, or why you call school, just to educate the parents on your thought process behind that.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that. I am, as I think everybody knows, tremendously reluctant to call off school. I am particularly reluctant to exchange a mid-winter school day for a day late in June, which generally does not translate into the highest level of education going on. At the same time, I'm very, very reluctant to exchange a day that precedes MCAS for a day that follows MCAS. So I am very, very conservative when it comes to calling school off. And as folks know, this year, I think most of the district, most of the districts around us have called at least two additional days off that we did not. I feel pretty good about the fact that we gained those, those two days of schooling. I tend, the decision is based on my receipt of a lot of data. I'm in conversations with folks in the district prior, prior to Tom Walsh, prior to the making the decision. We talk on some evenings every half hour or so, trying to get an update, and when I have a thorough understanding of the, of the conditions, I make my decision. I think one thing that we included in the, in the deliberations this year that were not included before were the possibilities of having their early dismissal or their late arrival in order to get in most of a school day, what is typically amounted to all but an hour of a school day. Allowing that to happen requires me to wait a little bit longer than I might if I was just going to call, call the day off. And so I take that time to wait, and have had an opportunity this year, on one occasion to open late, and on another occasion to leave early, and it was largely because I waited. And I know that other local districts had, had closed the schools, and had closed it an hour or two before I had made that decision. But I'm, again, I think at the bottom of this is, I am very, very reluctant to close school. I just, I think that we cannot swap days in midwinter for days in June. It's like, in many cases, it's almost like losing days of, of education.
Thank you for the explanation, I do appreciate that. And I know there's a lot of parents who'll, you know, hear about this and listen in on it, so thank you. I remember, you know, waking up at 6:00 or 5:30 in the morning to find out if there's no schools, so when you do call the night before, I, to me, you're giving people a great head start, so. And I'm also in agreement that we should be conservative, and to me, the safest spot for kids is in the schools, and I'd rather have them in there warm and learning than home and who knows what. So thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. One question. Is it possible that you could talk to surrounding superintendents on, you know, when it's a questionable day?
Yes, and I have, and when we consistently disagreed with our assessment, I decided that wasn't the, you know, most productive route any longer, and so I've kind of talked more to our own folks.
Okay, thank you.
On the snow removal, actually got some information from a parent at Forestale that said that snow on the roof is becoming, or sliding down, and I don't know if that's something we've ever taken care of before, or have to take care of before, and how that would even be taken care of. She mentioned snow fences, but I'm not sure how that works, and I didn't know if any of that was ever brought to your attention.
It was actually last year, and last year, at Forestale, particularly above the library, there's a flaw, I suppose, you know, in the pitch of the roof that allows a lot of snow to gather there, and they've actually, custodians have gotten outside and tried to break it up and get it to fall off. We had a, had a problem last year, most particularly with the leak that resulted from the, the snow staying on there too long, and we talked about that, and came to an accommodation where I thought we would be able to get it removed, you know, by getting somebody up and actually moving it off. It came to my attention just through an email the other day that this happened, you know, it accumulated again and slid off the other day. I don't know that we can entirely keep that from happening, but I know I talked to Mr. Malanson after getting that email, just to get up to date on, you know, keeping on top of that to the greatest extent possible.
Well, you think, and she did say that they do have a kind of caution takeoff-
Yeah.
-when it's expected to-
Yeah, and the problem with the fence, you know, putting the fence up on top, is that, is that that will cause the leak in the, in the library, so it really just did not turn out to be a, a good strategy.
Well, I'm glad you know that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. Staying on, Mr. Friol. Mr. Smith, just, oh no, Mr. Mayor. The only complaint I got down at Linden School was on Education Way, the one-way street, that it wasn't plowed wide enough, and they, they lost quite a few parking spaces. So other than that, the principal down at Linden said that they, the job was done very well. Make a note to both Mr. Malanson on the Forestale, and also to Mr. Manship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it true that, as far as Linden is concerned, that the custodians actually take care of the street in front of the school, but that someone else takes care of Salem Street, Hunter Street area sidewalks? Or is it the DPW that takes care of all of it? Do we know how that works?
Primarily, the DPW will remove, they certainly do all of the snow on the public ways. Larger sidewalk areas, they're usually done by DPW people, if not during the course of the snowfighting, plowing the streets, it's done these after-hours. People, if not during the course of the snow-fighting, plowing of the street, it's done these after-hours efforts, but the custodians, depending upon the group, either typically be responsible with stairways, entryways leading to stairways, but the large expanses of sidewalks that are in front of most of our schools are usually done by DPW.
Well, just a note, because Linden, speaking of Linden, in front of schools, generally immaculate, but once you get up onto where Hunting Street and Salem Street kind of meet, it's not very good, and it's actually quite dangerous. Myself, child, have drug on once and once, and so just to make a note of that, if they could perhaps take another peek at that before the season's over.
So you're talking the sidewalk?
The sidewalk, it's not necessarily front of the school, from the front of the street all the way down.
Where the retaining wall is, going up to the front.
If you're walking actually on this main street, as opposed to the street school.
Well, we're on snow removal. Just a couple, I know the high school, the Huntington Street sidewalk, this year, a lot of times it wasn't getting plowed, and so there was a lot of students, it was getting very icy, so that wasn't just this last storm, but I think Caitlin's nodding her head there, that, yeah, there is a good amount of removal right at the steps, as people going in, but that, that sidewalk there, and I know a lot of students come in to go to the basketball and swimming on that side, so, so that was something that was overlooked. And, and I know there was a very similar comment I had from someone from 630 Salem Street about the handicap ramps, and this is, man was particularly, he's a, he's, he's a blind man, and, and the issue of the snow plowing into the ramps. He did try calling DPW, didn't have much success. He did call your office, Mayor, and then they, he did, there was a pretty immediate response after that, so thank you for your office for doing that, but it's, it's just something to be aware. I know, I go into Maplewood Square a lot, and, you know, there's the charter school there, a lot of kids walk into Salem Wood, that a lot of times it's, the ramps are not plowed, you know, even, you know, a day or two after, that there should be some sensitivity in, in the busier squares to make sure the ramps do get cleared out. Thank you.
I know that when we had the late entry, right in front of Malden High School on Salem Street, specifically, like, the very front sidewalk, where you just walk right into the school, the main entrance, and then the crossing walks were so icy, everyone was slipping, and that was the late entry day, and I was wondering, who was in charge of salting that, or making sure that it was dangerous?
Well, depending upon exactly where it was, if it's on the street, on crosswalks, it would be DPW, but if it were in a stairway leading up to an entrance into the high school, probably would have been the responsibility of the custodial staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, and Mr. Duffy stopped. Thank you very much. We'll try to note some of the problem areas, and have the respective crews do as much attention and pick up on it as they can.
Can we make a motion that there be no more snow?
Moving on to item five, four, subcommittee updates. We've had a few along the way here, but if any other of the respective chairs or members have anything else to report, we can take that, this particular portion. That's, yes, you're very right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Policy Subcommittee met on several issues, quite a few of them have been tabled, and future updates will be coming at the next meeting on the 23rd.
Thank you, Ms. Ebbin.
The Building and Ground Subcommittee had a very brief meeting this evening before the start of the regular school committee meeting, and I, they had approved, the Subcommittee had approved of a, a motion that was made, a proposal that I had written, and it simply reads, beginning with the start of the 2009, 2010 school year, "Any group, organization, or institution from Malden will have an absolute preference in the rental of Malden Public School facilities, with regard to hours of rental and locations to be rented. And in addition, the Malden Public Schools will not accept any advance payments from any group, organization, or institutions from outside the City of Malden in any attempt to circumvent the preference stated above." And the Building and Grounds Subcommittee approved this, and I would make a motion to refer this to Policy Subcommittee.
So moved by Ms. Iavino, second by Ms. Ebbin. Any other questions on the language? Otherwise, Policy Subcommittee will take it up and report back to the entire committee. So moved, all in favor? Any other subcommittee updates? Otherwise, there are to transfers, any questions? Doesn't appear as though there's a need for a motion, if they're there for informational Any questions on transfers? Seeing none, we'll go to points of personal information or preference, Mr. Freyel.
Thank you. In the mail, school committee members should have received from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, an invite to attend MAS C Division One, Two, and Nine. We're members of the Division Nine Committee, which is urban schools. I am the secretary treasurer of that committee. We're having, on March 28th, which is a Saturday, in Lowell, we're going to be discussing, as hopefully we'll get as many members as possible, legislators to present their budget from the state, How to Budget in a Time of Crisis, which is also a document I sent to everyone via email, which is very interesting for school committee members to read. And then we'll also talk about what other districts are doing. We're focusing on the budget this year. Last year, we focused on crime prevention, such as gangs in high schools and stuff. This year, we thought, at the last Division Nine meeting, that we'd focus on the budget. And, so, I would hope school committees could attend. Time will be determined at a later date, but just check your mail. It's also a good time, as one of the eight cost factors of a successful school committee, one is school board, education, and professional development and communication. So, it would be a perfect time for members of a school board to actually meet under other members, and we go through the same problems that other urban schools are going through, so, great group, and I hope you could attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freyel. Other public announcements?
I'd just like to inform parents of Malden Public School students that on March 26th at 6:00 PM at the Salem Wood School, Healthy Malden, will be putting on a drug prevention presentation entitled Not My Kid. It provides drug, drug, drug abuse prevention strategies, as well as a free drug testing kit to be used as a preventative tool in the home. Children are not allowed to attend the presentation, but you can bring your kids, as childcare will be provided by the YMCA Malden. And then I'd also like to just put it out on people's radar early, that April 18th is the annual Healthy Kids Day, where Healthy Malden gives away, this year, 900 bicycle helmets to be fitted by the Malden Kiwanis, and it will be at the Malden YMCA. Parents can come down and get their children outfitted for a bicycle helmet, get their kids bike training, and then also do various forms of identification. And then our goal is to have every summer program in the city at the Malden YMCA that day, so parents can sign their kids up and have them occupied all the way until school starts again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mr. Freyel.
I, I know that the superintendent congratulated the Malden High School students, but I, along with my wife, attended the Junior Varieties on Saturday night, and I, I would not like to say how many years I've seen, I've been to the Junior Varieties, but it's been quite a few years, and, and it was one of the most spectacular shows. It was really good, as Mr. Winslow would probably attest to, because I saw him there. The junior class from Malden High School did a very nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Freyel. Mr. Winslow?
Yeah, I, I do want to credit all the juniors, as well as their, their faculty advisors for the great time at the Junior Variety Show. I also wanted to mention that this coming Sunday is the Malden Rotary Road Race, which you can register at 10 o'clock at the Chevron School, and the race starts at 11 o'clock, right there by the, the backside of the high, high school, so that's on this Sunday, March 15th, and maybe we'll see you, Mr. Mayor, again, as annual, or hopefully.
Just as a reminder that the Malden Kiwanis will be hosting a major fundraiser on the
19th of March, and Mr. Iavino has tickets for sale, so, thank you very much.
Mr. Duffy again?
Mr. Iavino reminded me, and Ms. Vado-Lara will kill me if I don't remind everyone else out there, March 19th at the BB school is the Second Annual BB Spelling Bee. Thank you.
And as of the 19th, also the Malden Magic, and the Wizards are playing, so don't forget to go there. Mr. Sid Smith will be a co-coach, so come and watch.
And then, and come later to.
And then come later to the Kiwanis party. And then, so.
You think we can take a, the appropriate motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.